Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting of the zoning board of appeals on Tuesday, June 13, 2017 to order. May I have you all stand before the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
All right, may I have both the commissioners, Kirby, Gazendt?
Here.
Allen?
Here.
Bueller?
Here.
Evans, Smith?
Here.
Emmons, Buds, McAlpin?
Here.
With that, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda that is printed copies at the door and also we all have it in our package for tonight's meeting.
Don't move. Second.
Do I roll call now? Oh, should I? Smith?
Yes.
Bueller?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Gazendt?
Yes.
McAlpin? Yes. Next on our agenda is approval of the minutes from our meeting on April 10, 2017, excuse me. Those were in our packet as well. If anyone has any revisions, questions, or additions, we'll entertain those now, if not, we'll take a motion to approve those.
I actually have, it's not really an addition, but I'd just like to note that the reason for my absence was, the meeting was held on the, on a night of a Jewish holiday that's very important to me, to Jews everywhere, that it was first or second night of Passover. So, it wasn't like I was just at the movies or something. So, that could be noted within the minutes that my absence was for very good reason.
Absolutely, we'll do so. With that addition, I need a motion to approve the minutes as well.
Don't move, as amended.
And a roll call vote, please. Gazendt?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Bueller?
Yes.
McAlpin? Yes.
Yes.
So with that, I need to let all three petitioners know that tonight due to a meeting date change and some personal conflicts, we do not have a full board here. We do have five members of the zoning board of appeals seated at the table today, and in order to either get your request approved, or if we should deny your request, it will take a vote of four of us that would be all in agreement of either the approval or denial. So you have the right to ask to have your item tabled, or you can proceed, and as we call each of you off, you can let us know if, how you would like to proceed. I guess if anyone does not want to proceed now, we can entertain that, and then we can skip that, but if the first petitioner is here, break, the first item we have, they can, we'll have you read what we're doing, and we'll go from there. Okay. Application number BA 0417, Melvin and Maureen Bush, 3658 Gardner, South half of Lot 14, the cottage home subdivision. Parcel identification number 2507453039, east side of Gardner between 12 Mile and Edwards, is seeking an appeal of the zoning officer classifying generators and accessory structure. Berkeley City Code Chapter 138 zoning, Article 3, general provisions, Division 1, accessory buildings and structures, Section 13853 yard location, accessory buildings or structures shall not be erected in any yard except for rear yard. If appeal is denied, applicant is seeking a variance. This is an unusual, this isn't your typical variance case, this is something, and Mr. Smith may want to explain more about it, given the recent outage that we had for three to five days, depending on where you were. When it was cold, we have had a number of requests for generators. The planning commission has looked at it at two separate meetings at this point, but we do have two folks here. One put it in without the benefit of permits, and we're working that through. This particular petitioner did not, and is looking to place it in a location that is in the side yard as a practice, since city manager Bill Reckland was here and former mechanical inspector David Murray was here. There has been a policy to allow AC units in the side yard as long as the, a buddy neighbor signs off on it, otherwise it does have to go in the rear yard. We have discussed as staff doing something similar, but given that the generator is about twice as large as an AC unit, you know, it just seems like you're sort of adding a lot of things into what might be right next to your neighbor's driveway. And we discussed, well, the neighbor, there might already be a fence there that's going to prohibit its driveway, but at any rate, there was just a lot of context that needed to be looked at, and so that is something the ZDA also has section under accessory structures for interpretation, so you can weigh in on this as well and make a determination on these particular items. And as I said, the planning commission is looking at an ordinance, and I am certain that your interpretations would be very well considered by the planning commission as well. All right, so with that being said, if the petitioners here, if they'd like to come forward and state their name and address for the record.
Maureen and Melvin Bush, 3658 Gardner, Berkeley Michigan, of course.
You just want to tell us a little bit about what you're, what you would like to do, and okay, we'll open now.
I have pictures here, I'd like to cast around so you can look, this is the side lot we want to put it on. As you can see, there is no driveway there, the neighbor's air conditioner is here, which we signed for years back. This is the back of the house where it would have to go, and as you can see, there's not really any room, so I want to show that. First off, we, we were affected bad by that power outage, we had to take our autistic sud, adult sud, and go hole up in a hotel room. My house got down to 45 degrees, I had to leave my cat in there, and we kept checking, we kept trickling water, we lost all the food in our refrigerator and freezer from it, and so that kind of pushed us over the edge of saying, yeah, we're going to invest in, and we did hear all these portable generators, which I am in full agreement are very, very loud. But again, I would never complain about them, because at least those people were able to keep their homes going. That prompted us to decide to invest into approximately $10,000 to put a generator in, so that it doesn't happen again, and as we get older, we're taken care of when we move on, and my son is in that home, it's not a burden to people of trying to worry about him. So, we wanted it on the side yard for the fact that that side yard, as you can see, there's a lot of property there that, rehess doesn't grow good, nothing grows, the neighbor's air conditioning is already there, and the backyard, there's no room. When they split that lot, they made it so small, and with all the ordinances of the lot lines and stuff, when, when we put a garage in a few years ago, and that took the rest of our yard. It's like, we can't even put a generator behind the garage if we were willing to invest another thousand in installation to go back there, because the garage was put right into the, you know, on the easement where it's, you know, where it's allowed to. So, there's no usable space other than really on that patio, that little patio area, and as you can see from the pictures, there's a table there, because my air conditioner's already on there, and we also have bedroom windows above where it would go on the patio, so, you know, if you ever did jump out of the windows or something, if there was a fire in the house, you know, you got more stuff on that patio area. So, we are, we're asking to be able to put it there, we have been surveying the neighborhood, I see many, many air conditioners, in fact, there's two homes on Gardner's that are built, they are not sold, they're brand new, they're, they're still in the process of selling, yet they have the air conditioners on the side, which tells me that although the planning commission says you have to have your neighbor's approval, they're allowing the builder, since he built both houses, to give the approval, not true living neighbors, taxpaying Berkeley residents. So therefore, I know there's a lot of exceptions made, there's a swimming pool in Berkeley that does not have a fence around it, it's been reported to the commission, yet they were told that it doesn't need a fence, and I went and read the ordinance online, and it does have to have some type of enclosure around it. So, I know there's exceptions that are made in the city, and I'm asking, I, I'm asking that, I want a generator so that I don't lose all my food again, I don't lose, have to go in a hotel room and, and do what we did during that last storm to be able to survive, yet I, I don't want to, you know, we, we have that little tiny bit of space in there, and as we get older, you want to enjoy, I, I'm trying to enjoy my home, my property, I've tried to keep upgrading it and making it as usable. We had to put a garage in, because when they built that house, there was no basement, and they hadn't had a garage, we had no place to store our possessions, we had, my son has a work area, we had to put the garage up so he could have a work area. We can't park cars in there because of the way that lots make, you know, but, so that's why we're asking it.
I will, if we need it to call on you, we'll, we'll call on you, get back and ask any questions.
And I wanted to say too, the noise, I have that in my paperwork, but when that is going in test mode, the noise is equivalent to a normal conversation. I look, I check the decibels online and everything. When it's running, because it powers out and we're using it in full mode, it's equal to a shower. So, these are not noises that are going to hinder neighborhood, and it's a beautiful, there's paperwork in there, it's a beautiful unit, it, it's prettier than my neighbor's air conditioner and my air conditioner. So, if I put a deck, deck box, it would probably look about the same.
Okay, I'd like to open it up to the commissioners and see if they have any questions for the petitioner. Mr. Smith?
Where do you plan to put, I know along the side of the house, you want to put it towards the front of the house, the back of the house, the middle, where's your?
Towards the front, that, when you, like, the fence is there, and we have the slats in it for privacy.
Sent by the property.
And then you have the, the gas meter, and then they were going to put the generator there, which is kind of equivalent to where Jerry Long has her, her air conditioner, so she's got her air conditioner, we would have our generator here, and then the fence between us.
And the installer is recommending to install it, of course, as close to the gas meter as you can get, otherwise they've got to put in a larger fuel pump.
Absolutely. He said it's easier to put it close to the gas meter versus the electrical, and to me it seems like a lot safer too. I don't know, but, I know we had to pay for a new meter and all of that stuff to meet the requirements.
They had a question. Before we proceed to the audience portion, which I'll open up in a second, I just want to make sure that we record for the record that we do have communication from Joanne Long Anderson, who resides at 3618 Gardner, and basically as a 35-year resident, I'm fully in agreement with South Fire, locate locations for a generator, people have very little yards, yard in back for such inside yards are basically useless, calling it a structure is really beyond my comprehension. So, we do have communication from one of the neighbors close to this property that they do approve the location of the generator. So, with that being said, I'd like to open it up to see if there's anyone from the public who would like to come forward and speak on this specific item. Seeing none, I will close that portion of the hearing on this item and open it back up to the commissioners, and we can decide what we would like to do on this end.
I'd ask a follow-through question quite good from Mr. Smith here. When you guys talked about it at the planning commission level, was there any sort of general consensus, not, not an official vote or anything, but a general consensus from the other commissioners and stuff, if you guys would like to progress with that?
Well, let me start by saying that the planning commission has probably three of the five homes in Berkeley that don't have central air conditioning. So, there's, my preference at State and Planning Commission meeting was that these things belong behind buildings. Now, since then, I've done an audit of the community in the last couple of days where it's been warm, kind of wandering around the neighborhoods. There are very few open windows. When the air conditioning ordinance was put in place, they were supposed to be behind buildings because noise, and especially in the 40-foot lots, when you have the unit, say right in the middle of that lot, the noise is just going to echo between the buildings. Newer units are quieter, the generators are quieter than air conditioning, so noise really isn't the issue. So, that's a lot of words for saying, at the planning commission level, we didn't come up with an agreement as to where air conditioners and perhaps generators would belong. The sense I got was, there needs to be a minimum distance from the building. We haven't seen that. I have not found a block in the city of Berkeley that doesn't have at least a couple of air conditioners in between buildings. And usually those are put right in the center of the building, because that's closest to furnace, which is usually close to the chimney. So, how's that for a really long man answer?
I know there's ways to go on that, because we didn't get a sample draft tonight, and I thought a lot about what you were discussing, where if you have something that's located centrally along the house, be it a air conditioning unit or a generator, that some flaps back and forth, and the taller the house is, the worse it gets, because it just stays trapped in there. But, you know, I did a little research of my own and listened to some of these units, they're very quiet, the new generator units, and I had a friend of mine who has a portable generator, but he uses a case of a power outage, I had him pull it out and start it for me. It's louder than my 52-inch mower. It's really loud. And, so, I guess if I had my choice, I'd certainly be more happy to hear a pad on the generator than a portable that somebody's pulled out of their garage.
Not only that, the permanently installed generators, if they're properly installed, the correct switch here, they're safe. One of the things that the utility people hate to hear is a portable generator, is often it's backfeeding into the power lines, which is not a good situation.
Doesn't have a transfer switch.
And you don't. For these things, just to kind of finish my long, meandering explanation, my, my personal view of where a generator or an air conditioner really best belongs is either towards the front or back of a building. If it's going to be in the side yard, probably the worst place is to put it right in the center of the building. If it's towards the front or towards the back, it's going to have a better opportunity to let the sound dissipate. Typically, we put things like that towards the back of the house, just because it's further from the street. At this point, I have no preference, certainly the law, professional opinion.
Do you have any other questions? Okay. All right, are there any other questions for any of the coordinators?
Yeah, question, great. I just want to make sure I understand the law and the way to interpret it as is right now, so we have to make kind of a threshold determination as to whether or not we're going to consider a generator accessory structure, first off, correct?
So, when the city attorney advised me, he says, yeah, you know, it's an appeal of something off the decision, and, yeah, we do want, I think that given the fact that we're in the city attorney, no cities will use the analyst.
Sorry.
We can't hear you very well.
I'm sorry. So, the question is, is, he's asking legally, as far as what the different standards are that the ZDA has defined. So, the city attorney advised me that yes, handle it as an appeal, since we don't have an ordinance on exterior appliances currently, the only policy that we have is on AC units, and I was not comfortable continuing that on with a larger structure, so that is why it's coming with the board. So, the board will need to determine how you want to handle exterior appliances, at least at this point, on a case-by-case basis, since we don't have an ordinance.
So, as of right now, the city attorney is saying that it's an accessory structure?
No, the city attorney is saying that, that the building department can determine where it can locate, the building department says that the only thing that we have exceptions on are AC units, everything else has to go in the backyard. So, if they don't want to do that, they have to reveal it to you guys.
Can I have the chair? To help with the explanation, an accessory structure is often called a shed?
Shed?
Is that a question? Well, it is a question.
There's all kinds of accessory structures.
Right.
Yeah.
But a small accessory structure is typically a shed of some sort.
And I drank a number of it, I thought I read that as of right now, is it possible with air conditioners that you're required to get your neighbor to sign off on it?
Yep.
What is this idea?
Yes, and if the builder has both houses, then it's considered, he's owning both of them, he's the property owner, he can, and if he can sign off on it, that anybody that who is coming in gets an existing condition as opposed to somebody that's lived there 50 years, and now it's a new thing.
So, would that be an option for us as well, to make a determination that it would be treated as an air conditioner, and that your neighbor has to sign off on it? My concern on this is not particularly, this case, it's just making some sort of sweeping determination that any one in Berkeley can always hold their generator in the side yard. We don't know every case that's going to be, you know, we don't know every set of neighbors, we don't know every house, and what's fine here might not be fine later, that might be a real problem, so.
I think in this particular case, as I said in my report, I think you don't have a driveway that's, that's, my biggest concern is, in many cases, you do have the alternating side yards, where you have worse any side yards next to the name of the driveway, there's not a fence there, and then all of a sudden, there's this structure there, and maybe you're okay with it, but maybe you didn't realize how big it was going to be, and all of a sudden, I mean, because I heard from the planning commission, folks that didn't realize the AC unit was there, and all of a sudden, oh, it's kind of louder than I thought it was going to be, because I keep letting myself, I mean, AC units don't bother me, but, and my rooms are open, but, I'm concerned about these things, and so, again, I wasn't comfortable with having appliance proof happening in the side yard, given that it's right next to the name of the driveway. But I think it's fair to say on a case-by-case basis, if you want to have that sort of determination that you think the neighbors ought to sign off on, it's an AC unit, you know, I know the planning commission talked about that, and it was kind of, well, and if there, there is an existing AC unit in the side yard currently, and they're replacing it, we don't require another signature, and that was something that's discussed as well, so we're sure this radical that's going now with exterior appliances. So, and I know the applicants are very anxious to get this AC unit, or not, a generator in, and they'd like a determination, see if they're not waiting for the six to 12 months that an ordinance usually takes.
If we decide for this case, the first applicant, that the generator is an accessory, is not an accessory structure, would that, would that be a sweeping determination for all generators, or would that just be an appeal on this particular case?
So, it's each case, so each stuff is separate?
So, each case is separate, and we can determine?
Yeah, and you could even say, if you think, yeah, it is an accessory structure, because what else are you going to call it, given what you have in the code book, you could say, yeah, we find that it is an accessory structure, but we think, because it doesn't make sense to have it 10 feet away from the house, like other accessory structures, or the accessory rules that have to be fixed, and, you know, there are insinuating circumstances to allow that, so that's why I said, in lieu of an appeal, they're asking for a variance. So, you can say that as well, and the fact that the code doesn't really address exterior appliances, and that's what the city attorney and I talked about, is, he represents other communities that have larger lots, and he says, you know, you're getting into solar arrays that aren't addressed, and, you know, a lot.
So, in other words, we can define an accessory structure on a case-by-case basis?
No, I don't think you can define an accessory structure on a case-by-case basis, but you can say if this one, if you don't think that the accessory structure, I think in this determination, if you consider this accessory structure, then it needs to be 10 feet away, and it absolutely meets the requirements of what a shed would be or a garage would be, I don't think that's reasonable in this case, given that it's an appliance, and it needs to be attached to a building and tied in with somehow, and you don't want it sitting like a silo in the backyard, that's tough.
Right.
So, I think it is up to the ZDA to say that for accessory appliances, we think in this case, this is inappropriate location, I think you can do that.
And in the future, we could say another structure, that this is inappropriate location, because they want to put it right to the corner of the house, which the quote is in.
But to do what you suggested, we could do that without following defined criteria?
I think you could, per area, and you think that, given the code, how it's written, and suggesting it might be unreasonable or some justice, or, yes, yes. Okay, anyone else care to comment?
Just want to tee up again, I'm leaning towards approving the variance application and allowing the applicant to install a generator in the side yard, because one, you've got the neighbor on the other side has their air conditioning that they're, two, you're in a situation where the two houses, there's not a driveway between them, it's where the driveways flip, so you have a, certainly not absolutely unique situation, or a common situation here in Berkeley. But I'm wondering your thoughts on, the easy place to put it is right by the gas meter, it's a short fuel line, you don't have to worry about pressure drops. I'm thinking the right place to put it is towards the back of the house, and want to kind of feel you guys out for what are your thoughts on.
Did I say something?
The meter is right at the front of the house.
Well, I, I know how these work, and it just, the question is, the easy place to put it is right next to the gas meter, where is the right place to put it?
Could I say something too on the size? You know, that isn't even as big as a deck box, it is 26.75 inches high, 10.5 inches wide, and only 6.91 inches deep, so you're not talking a very big unit, it's, deck boxes are bigger now.
That's actually the transfer switch box.
Yeah.
Any other comments from, or any other questions that we have?
I'd just like to add that I really don't have any preference, front or back of the house, but the one thing that I do have a preference on, since we've been doing it on air conditioners from day one, I would like a sign off from the neighbor.
It's in the package, and here's my copy, but it's in your package. No, she read the neighbor's mother, who lives the next house over, who must have wrote a letter, who also signed on it, but Jerry Long, the one from Jerry Long on 3642 Gardner, signed off, she had no problem at all.
All right, so I think we need to take into account that the, that she, we have something here, since she signed, but she also did not show to say she was against it, so, take, I'm sorry? Oh, no, no, I'm just saying, so we have, we have something on record that she signed, and I think that that is, that is sufficient.
She was going to come and support us, but yesterday would have worked for her, today didn't.
No, it's fine.
And one more thing too, if I could say, if you put that generator towards the back of the house, there's a window back there, because it's a tri-.
Family room?
And then when you go down, then there's going to be that window right there.
And plus the neighbor's bedroom, her sister's bedroom is that way, the front of the house is, is both of our living rooms, so, you know, it's not as bothersome, if you did get the noise in the house, and I know Jerry said that she was more leaning towards it, because she said, are you going to put it by my air conditioner, and I goes, well, that was our preference, and she goes, okay, because, you know, the only thing would be Beast's bedroom, if we don't know how the noise. bedroom. We don't know how the noise would be, but because they're nurses and sometimes they work weird shifts.
Okay, so at this point, what is the pleasure of the board regarding this?
Well, I'd use, I have no problem with the applicant picking the generator there, but I think it needs to be done in a way that is limited to this case. And it would take me a little thought to go through crafting the appropriate motion under the criteria. And I agree with Mr. Allen with regards to the written permission. I think that ought to be built in there over this.
Yep, and we have a written permission here. So can we basically say then, Ms. Vanson, that we approve the application BA zero four one seven, given that strictly?
Strict conformance.
Conforming to Berkeley City Code, Chapter one thirty-eight zoning, Article three, general provisions, Division one, accessory building and structures, Section one thirty-eight dash five-three, yard location accessories would be unnecessarily burdensome. But by approving this, that does not give a blanket approval moving forward for any other?
No, I think you're finding a variance and showing the practical difficulty is that strict conformance is unnecessarily burdensome because the code doesn't adequately address that the requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice given the location of it, the position of it, next to the neighbor's living area and the AC unit. So it's going to mitigate any impact that it's going to have. So I think you've addressed it.
And there are unique circumstances and physical conditions of the property.
With the back, here at the patio.
Knowing full well that we do have a sign off from the next door neighbor, just as a matter of housekeeping, I would really like to see the requirement of a sign off from the closest neighbor as part of that. So it's part of the history.
Yep, well, we have it, so.
I'm going to include it as a condition.
Good, thank you.
The thing about the condition of having that, that it was our request, the thing about the condition.
I guess my last thought is I profess ignorance. I don't know, I don't think I know enough right now to try to say whether it should be more towards the front or the back on the side. I don't know that I really a hundred percent understand what you're saying.
We have pictures up here. Typically, any noise-making appliance is put towards the rear of the house. But I think in this case, just listening to discussion, at the rear of both houses, you've got bedroom windows, one of which is lull. You know, I'm not, I think it's got to be at least three feet from an operable window, you know, any combustion device. So in this case, you wind up almost by default going to the front of the house because there's nothing.
And what's the significance of the box? Does something have to run from one to the other?
Well, the box is a transfer switch. So that takes care of the electricity and then there's just a fuel line. We try to tie in as close to the gas meter as we can.
So really while this is not ideal in a general sense for this specific property, it's probably the best location to put it.
For this specific property, it appears to be the...
And it also takes into consideration the buddy neighbor and their pride and not interfering with their personal happiness and living in their house.
It's a reasonable.
Maybe we just don't say because they're not going to, not that they're going to voluntarily, I mean, build it right next to their windows, right? So we just say they can build it where they want on this one or do we somehow have to map out an exact?
She's shown where she's...
Yeah, I say as proposed. We want it installed as proposed by the petitioner.
Yes. And for our brains, you want to put it towards the end of a building rather than the wall.
So we have this really nice motion that we all grouped together. I don't have a motion maker or a support.
I'll make the motion then. I guess I grabbed it. I'm sorry, I can't. I didn't get it. I was just...
I'll move the motion as the group craft.
I'll support it.
All right, roll call, please. Okay, Alan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Uller?
Yes.
Mick Alphine?
Yes.
Giselle, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So you're awesome.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Now hopefully no more power. Because I'd like to not use...
I was going to say, I hope maybe you've solidified it for the rest of us.
I'm hoping so.
It should be just like a snowblower. It's nice to have one in the garage and never have to use it.
All right, so moving on to item number two on our agenda, application number BA zero five one seven.
Chris Sterns, two three nine two Cambridge, lot sixty-eight of the Hannings West Royal Oak subdivision, personal identification number two five one seven three five one zero one eight, Northside Cambridge, Cambridge, New Orleans, requesting an area in accordance to code, Chapter one thirty-eight zoning, Division seventeen, Schedule of Regulation, Section one thirty-eight five twenty-six, Schedule of Regulation. In the R one D district, the smallest side yard shall not be less than five feet. Both side yards shall total fifteen feet and Section one thirty-eight five twenty-seven, notes of Schedule of Regulation, there shall be a distance of at least fifteen feet between dwellings. The applicant seeking this variance in order to construct an addition.
All right, so do we have the applicant present? Would you like to come forward and state your name and your address for the record, please, and tell us a little bit about your request?
I'm Chris Sterns, the wife Jenny Rose Sterns. We're looking to add an addition off the back of our house with a attached garage and some living space above for our growing family. I'm trying to grow roots here in Berkeley. I moved here a couple of years ago and I'd like the area. I'd like to stick around.
Do any of the, did you take your name and address to the record?
Oh, Chris's address, Chris Sterns, Jenny Rose Sterns, two three nine two Cambridge, Brooklyn.
All right, if you want to have a seat, if we have any questions, we'll call you back. I'd like to open it up to the board and see if they have any questions for the petitioner regarding their request.
How wide is your lot?
That's a lot in half, about?
Sixty. That's sixty feet wide. And the plan is to keep your existing driveway where it is. Leave a pad where your garage will was be and then you're...
Make your house like an alley, yeah?
Yes. But it's a sixty-foot wide lot.
Correct. Thank you.
Any questions?
How many square feet is your home now?
Right around nineteen hundred.
What would it be if it expanded?
Twenty-five hundred, fifty.
Any other questions?
Do you prefer this to a rear detached garage?
Yeah, and we're looking to add another bedroom for complete, another... But the main reason, yeah, the main reason is detached garage.
If there's no more questions, I'll close our portion for the moment and open it up to the public and then discuss further. All right, anybody, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak? May to the podium and just tell us your name and address, please?
Jane Miller, I'm next door neighbor, two four one four Cambridge. I've lived there for forty-two years. I guess it's going to impact me the most because it's right next to my fence. I've had some concerns. I've talked to Chris tonight. Just kind of found out about this, exactly what they were going to do. My main concerns were water drainage from this addition. I said I don't want it to be flooding my backyard, coming off and going down my driveway that I've asked to be taken care of. My also next concern would be the portion between the addition and my fence. Right now, there's a big tree there and I had to see the tree gone. It's been dropping branches on my garage and damaging my garage. So it's good that the tree's gone, but I wanted to know how that's going to be maintained. So we've addressed that tonight, either with mulch, cement, whatever, because I don't want it to become an area that's neglected and then we have a rodent problem. And so those were my biggest things that concerned me and they have been addressed. And if we can keep this nice family in Berkeley, I'm all for it. I would be glad to sign off on it because it concerns my lot.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your comments.
Am I allowed to speak because the builder was not a resident of Berkeley?
Yeah, we should have had just been in the applicant portion. Wait, is anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak? So no one else? Any follow-up questions to the petitioner, the neighbor, the board? Yes.
This is a question probably that the builder would want to answer. Reading through the materials, I guess the position that you've taken is that you need the addition as close to the fence as you can get it to allow for a radius turn to get a vehicle into the garage. Is that accurate?
Somewhat. So a garage needs a certain depth to accommodate a car.
Can I just have you approach and then give us your name?
My name's Joe Sladovich. I'm the owner of Total Home Solutions. There is a certain dimension and that's the twenty-two feet foot dimension that is, we're trying to accommodate a car. So when you're into the garage, you don't have to open the door to walk around. You still have ingress and egress around two cars. And if you look on the drawing there, there is a current sliding glass door that is their egress point from their existing kitchen. The family would much like to not move that or move that door or minimize that door because it's their view to the backyard and their way to get into their backyard. So that sort of acted as a starting point, if you will, toward the west. And again, a minimum dimension of twenty-two feet sort of took me a little bit past, two foot ten past the existing house. So that's where we're getting our stack up on this. It really did work out to the inch that we were at that door and five feet from the property line. So some bit of faith was in our favor, I guess, from that perspective. So that was the reason to keep some symmetry for what we're actually constructing. We do have options, but this is a little easier one to build because it's just more rectangular. We have a little, a couple of different versions that we could present.
You may not be able to see well from here, but this could be your west wall?
Yes.
And then you're just jogged out a little?
That is exactly right. Now, what I'm not showing here, because we're not at the design phase yet, is that in between where the garage door is going to go, there would be a mudroom area and a bit of storage inside the garage. So theoretically, your little drawing is correct in that we could start at the sliding glass door and go out to the edge of the current house. But then as we would require the twenty-two foot dimension, the house would then step towards the east, that two foot ten. So there would just be a small little jut in the wall right here to accommodate the cars, yet not mess with that sliding glass door coming out of the garage. Now, from a perspective of view, you'd be seeing two foot ten of your garage from your kitchen. So not exactly aesthetically pleasing from the client's perspective, being that they're the ones going to be living with it. So again, that's where the variance came into play with regards to this being option today.
Yes, that's an attractive option. Later on, you'll hear discussion about building separations. And given that this is another one of the Berkeley lots, that you've got driveways on the far side of each home?
No, this is her driveway. This is her garage.
I'm sorry.
But it is set off to the side. It's not right there.
Set off to the side.
Yes.
Many homes are being redeveloped.
Sure.
And we push yours out and that squeezes the neighbor sometime down the road. So we've got a discussion here.
And you already have a non-conforming condition on both sides, unfortunately. So it's a bit of a...
To make sure my brain is working right, this setup is an option.
Yeah.
Where, so you could keep the west property line. It's just not as pretty for the homeowner.
Next, when they look out that door, and it's only just about a six-foot door, half of that door would be corner of that garage. It would cut off, you know, a chunk of the view. But again, it's an option that they've at least considered. Are there any more questions? Just let me know. She's sitting over here.
Okay, any other questions?
That was my question for the builder.
Other comments? Yes, no, we are.
I would just have a terribly hard time justifying, you know, if we have these criteria that we're supposed to follow. And to me, the application is very much about the dream home you desire to have. But that's not something based on the necessity of uniqueness of the property. I just couldn't, I can't think of a legal way to craft something to say that, you know, that you guys really need to do this to live here because of the unique circumstance of this property. So that's kind of long.
The sketch that Mr. Smith showed, that would not require a variance.
A highly professional sketch.
Looks like a...
Yes.
Again, there's options that are available, as I said in my report, if the, as long as that, the house setback is maintained, even though there is, as is noted. So yes, if they maintain that distance of seven feet, ten inches, all the way back, that's an option to them. I'm not sure what you really meant, something that was going to, I couldn't follow you, Mr. Smith, on what you said.
Oh, oh, what the sketch was, what I had thought about was this would be the west property line of the home, this straight line here.
Yeah.
So it's maintaining the same west dimension, but the garage does need to be deep, twenty-two feet. That's, to me, it's not deep enough, but...
It's close. I mean, it's close. It's about as minimal as you can get.
Yes, for the full-size vehicle or a Ford truck, that's all you're going to get.
Correct.
But then build it out towards the east. But he's got this sliding glass door, two panel door. The wall is at the west end of the door wall.
So you're going to maintain it this way, you're going to slide this in and then you're going to have...
Yes, exactly. And even if the applicant wanted to go a little bit deeper to make up for some lost space.
They've got a lot of land.
They've got plenty of room. So it's, it's hard for me to get to the hardship when there are options.
I'm sorry, Ms. Vanson, did I answer your question?
It did. It did. Thank you.
Do you have something you want to ask?
No, it's pretty much what I was thinking.
Good, then just...
There's a few, there's a few things that we have to follow, like a checklist in order to grant.
in order to grant a variance. And I'm not seeing enough reasons that fit that criteria to allow us to, our hands are kind of tied. We understand what you're trying to do, but our hands are tied as far as granting the variance under these criteria that we're allowed to with your existing proposal. And it seems like there's other, there's other possibilities where you either wouldn't need a variance or it would, it would allow, it would allow you to do what you want to do, but might not be as attractive.
Yes, sadly, we are very much, very often put in a comfortable situation because you look like a wonderful family. You're exactly what we want here. We want you to stay. But we are bound by our position and by, I guess, law, you would say, to follow five specific criteria. And if we cannot meet those criteria, all five of them, then we cannot truly approve a variance. So I'm going to ask the builder again, you said there's options.
Yes.
Do any of the other options require variances that you have?
As, as long as you are okay with the current non-conforming condition and I don't have to go past that seven foot 10, then no.
So you're just strictly creating the same, keeping the same footprint?
Well, the same, well, side setback.
I'm just saying that you're sending the current footprint and not deviating from that.
The only thing that I would say is that technically, the wall itself would not be less than seven foot 10, but the eve assembly would be.
So you'd go up.
So as the roof line goes back, it has to come off down and return for the gutter and the soffit area. That would be less than seven foot 10 by about a foot and five inches, which is the assembly of the soffit plus the gutter, but that'd be two stories up.
And is there an issue with the, there's no issue with the height either, or else we would be addressing a height difference as well here?
We typically measure from the foundation.
Right, so I'm just saying, I know when we did ours, we had a height issue, so I just wanted to make sure that we're not overlooking something.
I think we changed the code because of that.
Oh.
We did. Not for you, but because that particular, that particular house made us realize that everything was going to get too shallow and you weren't going to have the really nice roof pitch on larger houses, so that's why so. Just explain for the rest of the group.
So with that in mind, I think a proper protocol would be to let you proceed with Plan B or Option 2, whatever you want to call it, but we'd have to deny this motion. And because the other one does not need any kind of variance, you'd be free to just submit your plans and go through the proper protocol of applying your permits and so forth. Anything? We're still talking, so anything you want to add, I don't know, or you want to ask?
One sec. It's 15 feet between buildings, right? So if we went with the straight wall, it wouldn't need a variance, even though it's only, what, 13 feet?
It's 12 foot 6. As long as the existing non-conforming dimension can be upheld, we will not need a.
So because you're already non-conforming, you're going to, you're just going to continue that same line?
Yep.
So there is no issue.
How do you guys deal with that?
There is, there is no issue on our end.
Okay.
Or you will not have any issues moving forward with that design.
So we won't be back next month with a different design?
That's not.
No, you don't have to. No, no. What we're saying is.
Section 138, 603, okay? Berkeley City Code says that administrative review for dimensional variances shall be conducted by the building department in cases where the use of the building or land is conforming. No more than two variances have been granted to the property within the last five years, and the request does not exceed existing building setbacks.
So you're already there. So you already, you.
So no, we're not just phantoms here. It's right there.
No, no, nope, nope. You would be, you'd be, have been able to present plans tomorrow.
Or can we do that now?
Yeah, no, so you'd be able to then present plans tomorrow and proceed or whenever they'd be ready to go.
Okay.
So with that in mind, once again, you know, we sometimes really struggle and it's because you don't, we can't meet what we want to do and what you want to do in your plan, why it was nice. We cannot come up with five reasons why we should approve it. So given that, we're grateful that you want to stay here. We wish you well, but we will go ahead and entertain a motion and let them proceed.
Well, they're moving to Huntington Woods.
Duh. May I add one thing?
Sure.
Going by your house, I've admired your house for years, but I think the addition that you're going to do is very tasteful.
Yes.
To be able to put a attached garage behind your building. Several years ago, we changed our ordinance here in Berkeley to discourage any kind of a front-loading attached garage, because we wanted to keep the character where you see a house and not garage doors. So to have the attached garage and have it swing around is exactly what we tried to do with our master plan and with our changes to the rules. So I'm just pleased as punch that a growing family wants to expand and invest here in Berkeley.
And no disrespect to our friends, and I have many friends who live in Huntington Woods, who want to show a living in Berkeley much more.
Oh, all right then.
All right, if I could have a motion, please?
I move to deny the case.
PBA 0517.
PBA 0517 on the grounds that it does not meet the requirements for variance.
Support.
So a yes vote is to vote to deny the variance application?
Correct, correct. Allen?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Gesund?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
That's it? Yeah. Okay, thank you. Good night. Thank you. All right, next on our agenda.
Thanks, guys.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming today. Look forward to seeing the addition, Gary.
Application BA 0617.
Yep, Tom, and you, Overtinsky, 3695 Rubina, north 20 feet of Lot 96 and all of Lot 97 of Giverance, Holberman's Berkeley Sub, parcel ID 2507454039, southwest corner of Rubina and Everest, seeking an appeal of zoning officer classifying generator as an accessory structure. Berkeley City Code, Chapter 138, Zoning, Article 3, General Provisions, Division 1, Accessory Buildings and Structures, Section 13853. Yard location, accessory buildings or structures shall not be erected in any yard except a rear yard. If appeal is denied, applicant is seeking a variance. So the discussion we had before, same thing, copy paste, yes.
All right, is the position there? Would you like to come forward and just give us your name and address, please, to the record?
I'm Tom Overtinsky, 3695 Rubina, so I'm the one for the variance application. I'm in a little bit of a unique situation because I'm working with the main city building inspector who told me to seek the variance because my generator's already installed. And I had hired a company a couple of years ago, and they said they'll take care of everything. Took care of everything, but didn't take care of the permit and stuff like that. So I'll have to get that taken care of, no matter what the outcome is of this. Basically, I'm here because of Duane. The reason we put the generator in, in the first place, is the block that I live on, which I believe we probably share the same grid, loses power multiple times every year. And especially when Hillers was there, we're losing power four, five, six times a year. So that's why we got the generators, because I have two small kids, so my wife could not be here to take care of them. The location that the current generator, that the generator is in right now is in between the two houses. It's actually forward and not rear, so towards the front of the house. And the reason it was put there is because there was no, there's no room in the middle because of the AC unit. And then as you go further back, there's the emergency escape from the.
Egress window?
Yeah, the emergency egress window. So that was, that was the decision, one of the big reasons to place it where it's at now. And in, after hearing the city ordinance is for the position as of the generator being back of the house, it's going to be kind of difficult in our situation in that my neighbor and I share the same yard. Basically, we have a little commune in the back because we have two small yards. So we figured, you know what, let's not put up a fence and just share it. He has a little boy. I have two boys, so we use that as a, basically a public space between our two houses. In fact, he signed a letter, actually wrote a letter.
Does he say we have quit staff letters here?
Yes, I can go on, but I went, after I received my variance notification, I actually went around the block and around the 300-foot radius, asking people to see what they thought if they got their card. And I mapped it out for you. I don't know if the map got.
It's fine here, yeah.
Yeah, it got transferred over. And everybody that I approached, they had no, no qualms with the generator. In fact, the biggest question was, you have a, you have a generator? So, and the people across the street were asking the same thing. So it just reinforces the fact that they're relatively quiet compared to portable generators. And exercise mode, they're actually, all the decibels were went over, so they're actually quite quiet. Yeah, the other reason, the other reasons why we placed it where it was is because the utilities are located there. The AC units are located there. It's a relatively newer build. It's 2007. So the builder, as you mentioned, was in possession of the two houses, so he okayed the AC units to be between the two houses. So we've been living with our AC units between the two houses since, since 2007. You know, I don't know if you guys can remember, but when Hillers was there, Hillers would bring in their semi with the Caterpillar industrial-sized generator, and that thing would rock the neighborhood. So the whole thing about generators being, you know, disruption portable generators, that's the biggest portable generator that was around, and that rocked the whole neighborhood. I also did some research into the surrounding cities in terms of their ordinances, and you know, Royal Oak, Birmingham, Troy, they all allow the generators to be at the side of the house. I got Duane to come out to just kind of go over where I would be able to put this. And he suggested putting it on my back patio, which is just a little semicircle that we use to sit at. That would be kind of, that would be right in the middle of our, you know, our public space. Additionally, that area tends to flood, the patio has settled. And one of my neighbors redid his grade and resided. Another neighbor did the same thing. They must have elevated their, the level of their lawn, but a foot and a half. So all that water just drains into our, we have Lake Rubina in the back. So, and that kind of goes up into my, into my window. So putting it there, I'd have to elevate it, and I would, I mean, water and electricity don't really mix too well. What else can I say? So I obtained 47 signatures. Everyone that I approached was fine with it. They had no issues with it, they had no issues with the noise. And I think they were being honest with me. The people that I couldn't get weren't available to talk to. So that's all plotted out. It's pretty expensive. And as I mentioned, my next door neighbor, Steve Urban, he wrote a letter of support. In fact, during the last power outage in the wintertime, that was actually the first time I used it for an extended period of time, you know, with power, his appliances as well. More than happy to run more than that. So that's, that's my experience.
All right, if you'd like to have a seat, we'll open it up and see if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak also to be in consideration. We do have 47 letters in our packet indicating that they do approve. If there's anyone from the audience who's here who would like to come forward, you're welcome to come to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
Kurt Heike, 3525 Rubina. I live down the street from Tom, and I'm going to tell you what, he's a, he's a great addition to this community. And I just want to tell you, you know, I know some of the concerns about with generators. You worry about noise, and you worry about the looks, you know. Tell you what, don't even really notice him go by his house. His house is kept very well. It's not an eyesore. And as far as noise, I know we've covered that they're quiet. I'm going to, I just want to explain to you, when the power were out, you go up and talk to him, you don't even realize his is running. You hear the neighbor's two doors down, you hear mine down the block, you hear the other person across the street, you don't even hear his. And so the noise shouldn't even be a concern. I mean, to me, it's so overblown if people hear a generator and then right away, I want to think, you know, with these type of setups, if they hear a generator, I want to say, but I'm going to tell you what. He, he went out of his way, you know, I think I couldn't hear exactly what he said, but I just want to let you know, I know for a fact that he helped other neighbors with their power. And I thought that was just, you know, that shows what kind of a guy he is. And I'm proud to say he's my neighbor. I'm so glad that he moved to Berkeley. So I'm going to tell you, if you guys know that's any kind of a way to approve this, please think about that because, you know, he's not, he's not a burden. It's not, it's not wrecking our neighborhood to have that. Where is that? And we're plenty happy to have it, you know, if that's what it takes for him to stay here.
All right, well, thank you. Anyone else in the audience who would like to speak?
I'd like to just say that as far as it looks, you know, we, we took a picture. We're the ones that reported him, and I felt awful about it because I didn't know that they didn't have a permit or anything. But our contractor said, if you see one in Berkeley, take a picture to put in for your permit, and it will help support your case. And when my husband took the picture and showed it to me, I'm, that's an air conditioner. We need a generator picture. So I didn't even know it was a generator. It was very nice looking, and I had to go over, you know, I had to walk around the block and go look at it and stuff. So it's very nice. It's very neat. And like the other gentleman said, I mean, their yard is immaculate. And we went over there and checked out their yard, and, you know, they're kind of in the same situation. Wherever else they're going to put it is going to infringe on their rights. So I just wanted to say that.
There's nobody else here to speak? I'll just start by saying I, you know, I drove by Ern's property as well, and I don't even know that I would know that it wasn't an air conditioner unless I would have had the paperwork in front of me. So your house is, looks beautiful. I don't think the placement of it is any big burden some, and I understand the fact that we just need to clean up the paper trail, if you will, on this. So I will now open it up to anyone else in the commission who would like to either ask questions or make comments.
Just, I feel bad that, I've seen people get stuck in the situation before, where the contractor does not pull the permit. Unfortunately, it's an unfortunate set of circumstances, but I think you have a fairly large amount of letters that were written in your behalf in the back of people here to speak to the quality of what you have. And I have one question. Everything is along the east property line? Is that correct? South or south?
South.
Sorry, south property. Okay, so.
Anything else in the chat?
Nope.
Any other comments, questions?
Just, just a kind of another comment consistent with the earlier applicant. You've got a situation between the buildings where you've got, you guys on a corner lot. So there isn't a driveway between. You've got your adequate space between the buildings and the utilities and air conditioning and exhaustors, everything's already there. I always have an issue with rewarding somebody for not pulling permits, not doing a big deal. We don't, part of our decision is, was the contractor a good person or not? In addition to any ordinance that specifically deals with generators, I can't think of a reason to require the applicant to change the location of what they've got. I might consider asking them to put up shrub or something so you can't see it from the street. Previous applicant has a fence, imagine a stick. Previous applicant has a fence, imagine a stain. What I'm kind of struggling with is the hardship, this is what I'm looking for here. I would support the variance. It's corner lot, you've got, moving the generator to the back of the house might require a great change or some great time, but that in itself isn't a hardship. You don't consider economics. I'm struggling here because I want to support the application, I want to go right.
They also have the egress window.
They have an egress window, but this is, now, me, my position has been that these things belong behind buildings. And I'm evolving, because there's so many closed windows on a half day, that maybe between the buildings is okay.
And I would argue, I see exactly where you're coming from, but given there, you have an air conditioning unit there, you're putting the two of them together.
Right, now let's try to create a hardship out of that, that's what I'm struggling. I don't have an issue with putting the placement there, but I'm trying to formulate wording that says that it's an unreasonable burden to comply with an ordinance that doesn't exist.
We must have variance that not adversely impacts surrounding properties, because there's all the pretty many exterior appliances that are installed, window wells and... There's a window well, yes. That are in that space. It's the minimum variance... If existing conditions properties let, lends itself, this is the best place. Correct. It lends you, the request of variance is the minimum necessary variance necessary to use substantial justice to the applicant, as well as the property owners, and they're all right there.
It's not going to always come quite there.
Skimmy and... Sure compliance with the ordinance, well, and recently rent the property or using the property, well, there isn't any ordinance, so that in itself is a burden that we are... And we were arguing to put it on his patio, which would then... Yeah, that, yeah, that's, that, I don't think is what the code is supposed to be about, which is what led to the AC, that's, I think, is just one of these things that... Yeah, it's a new thing, so, and that happens.
And I think the hardship is the limited space in the back there.
And the egress window, which is something that was required for the property, the patio, we could argue, had optional placement, the egress window.
So you all are comfortable with that logical language? Yes. So I'm going to make a motion.
Is there any question? We already have the letter.
Yes.
What do you think for me is a normal ordinance?
Yes.
Yes, we're trying to formulate something, and I look at it as, we're moving away from my original position, so all of these things go behind the buildings. I'm okay with that, I just want to make sure we think that through.
I think we don't need to be building that into our reasoning, and we're saying it don't always happen. Again, it's just this particular case, and, you know, these particular facts of forty-seven people who live nearby, everybody who sort of files, to think this is a good place for it, so.
Unfortunately, some of our requirements aren't like the applicant's.
No, I understand, that's what I'm saying.
Something to show that it has impact.
Yeah.
Or that there's no adverse impact.
Right, right. And that it's installed and it's sort of benign enough that it wasn't... Right, and given the fact that, I bet you there's a whole bunch of people that drive the building, realize that that's what that is, and...
And actually, I mean, looking at the basic information we have, I mean, if we were to do it the other way, we would probably make this neighborhood more unhappy to have it, you know, on that common space, kind of sideline, that they are used, so...
Right.
To do substantial justice.
All right, so with that, there are no other comments or questions, we will adjourn the motion. What is our pleasure regarding application BA 0617?
Sure.
Yes, sure.
I move to grant PBA 0617. For the, all the reasons I can't even... Scratching to write down, if the... Granting the grants will not do any harm to neighboring properties' neighbors, straight, it really is important, it's still future, so we have a judgment that...
And it is, that is...
And it's a probable dislocation, but they have...
Given the current condition of the property? And taking into consideration that...
The air conditioner's already...
Yeah, well, the existing things and then... Yes, and...
Do you want to report the applicant for a shrub ever, or is he...
I'm fine with a shrub. I don't know what the shrub is. All right. Ready for a... Yes, please? Euler?
Oh, so, wait, sorry, one more time.
Grant the variance.
Oh, yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Gesand?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Allen, second question.
Yeah, sorry.
Very good. You are good to go, sir, thank you.
Thank you very much, both of us. The next time I won't send you pictures of people on the...
General, we're on a busy, unique call.
You can have a...
I don't think it really helps anybody, but, you know, I just wanted to make sure that, you know...
So now when they call...
We're getting it installed tomorrow. All right, is there any other business? No other business? No lead on report? Any other public comments?
I actually have a comment about the draft ordinance that you were provided from the planning commission. I'm, from my experience at my business, the vacuums that we use outside of, outside of our power washes are considered an accessory structure, and I don't see within the draft ordinance requirements for, as far as the commercial requirements, that the commercial requirements might be different than the requirements for residential.
Interesting, okay.
I'm not sure if that needs to be added, or...
Many businesses have generators, auxiliary generators.
That too.
Or vacuums. Thank you very much. With that, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at eight forty-one.